We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, please.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Grisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LaBla.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here.
Announcements, do any counselors have announcements they'd like to make this evening? Hearing done, we'll move on to our first item of business, public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening on assessments for the construction of road improvement district number five forty-one and five forty-two Herman Town Road and Bridge seven twenty-four. We'll start with Mr. Mulder explaining the project. And when he's done, we will get to any public testimony that needs to be taken. Mr. Mulder?
First of all, welcome to the public hearing tonight on Herman Town Road and Old Midway Road. This is kind of the end of a long process, part of our road improvement plan for two thousand and twenty-four. But before we get started into the project, the road improvement plan, the large construction, we want to first of all acknowledge that there's a point in reality that this project is complete at this point in time. There are your frustrations, we understand them. The work that has been done to date is not acceptable from the city's perspective. There are some actions that simply need to be done, and the contractor has not met those obligations per the timeframe or in the quality that we expected. We continue to talk to the contractor and have on notice that we expect this work to be done as soon as possible, and we'll hold them accountable to it. We understand, we know that there's some situations like that. If you have not talked to the city engineer or somebody on the project during the construction meetings, we're certainly willing to talk to you about those, but that's not really the purpose of this meeting, but we we want to acknowledge the fact that it's not done to your satisfaction, or and we are continuing to work on that. So we apologize that this project hasn't met the same time schedule as some of our other previous road projects. This is, like I said, kind of the end of the process for the public improvement plan. As you recall, back in April of twenty-three, we had our first public information meetings, and we kind of followed this little chart here about, here's the steps in the process. So in February, we received the bid for the project, and March, we awarded that contract, and that work has been ongoing since. And we tried to hold weekly onsite meetings with the contractor and with some of the neighbors as they felt need to be there. So this is just kind of that process. And then there's this one final step. The road improvement plan starts back in two thousand and nineteen when we did a financial management plan. And that financial management plan was a longer look and a broader look at kind of how do we look at future and existing debt? How do we look at capital improvements? How do we think about maintaining an asset and things like that? And one of the things that prior to two thousand and nineteen, we simply did not have a process to address reconstruction of existing city streets. So we started this financial management plan. As part of that process, and I think this is a slide that we shared with the public in our public information meeting, was we looked at the various funding options for local streets. And we looked at all the possibilities. Road assessments was one possibility. That is a common practice in Minnesota. It has been for years to do street improvement programs. General tax review is one. We do receive municipal state aid for certain roads, but that's only for certain roads and did not include Herman Town Road and Old Midway at these locations. We have some local government aid in two thousand and twenty-four, was the first time we had received it in a long time. We put that toward our new fire department. Sales tax is only for certain functions, so we couldn't use it for local streets. And then we do have a water utility, a stormwater utility, center sewer and street utility, and those funds can be used for improvements related to those particular things. So we didn't have water or stormwater or, excuse me, center sewer on this project, so we didn't apply any of those money, but we did use some stormwater utility funds for some of the culverts and for some of the part of the bread project as well. Kind of the background regarding road assessments in Herman Town is, again, we started this financial management plan back in two thousand and nineteen and how we could improve and make improvements to local streets. The funny thing about that is that that was also at the same time individuals remarking streets and saying, you know, pothole, yikes, things like that, if you recall. It was a little bit hilarious at the time. We were just concerned about people's being safe and their writing on the roads, and we didn't want to encourage vandalism, but it was just kind of funny how it happened on Herman Town Road at that time. We, we all kind of chuckled, and I always joke, it was like it was like one of Joe's first media presentations that he had to do, or he had to be on camera. But we reviewed various financing options, and we talked about that on the previous slide. And we also talked about the fact that we believe that there is a special benefit to the owners, but also a general benefit to the general public. We understand that road improvements don't just benefit the homeowners. When we do a water and sewer project, and we haven't done one for a number of years, typically the homeowners pay almost a hundred percent of those costs. So when we add water or sewer, there's a special benefit to that home, and typically we assess about a hundred percent of that cost. But we understood that in, on streets, it's like there is a special benefit to the homeowners, but also to the general public as well. So as we started this process in twenty-nine, we had an appraisal study done to help determine what that special benefit was. And we looked at two criteria for assessments. One, it must be uniform for the properties being assessed. And the city's kind of policy says that each person whose property abuts their own would pay an equal amount. The thinking is there, every parcel needs a road in order for it to be available a lot. So each one of them benefits by having a road in front of them. And so that's why we looked at that in terms of uniformity, having a single amount for each parcel. When we've done water and sewer projects in the past, sometimes we've looked at based upon the front seat of a lot or a parcel, or we've looked at different other ways of doing that. But for the uniformity, we said that each lot should, each parcel should have the same assessment. We also believe that there was a special benefit, but that assessment cannot exceed the value of that special benefit. We think the special benefit happens in the improved driveways, the improved road, improved drainage, improved nine-one-one signage, improved mailboxes, et cetera. Now, it's like there's argument, again, we understand that everybody benefits from that, but we also believe that there's a special benefit to each individual parcel that's being assessed. In order to kind of look at what that special assessment was, we did a study back in two thousand and twenty. And we hired a firm to look at the road improvement program that we were starting. And they looked at that, and their two conclusions were that there was a special benefit, and that ranged somewhere between eight thousand and twelve thousand dollars in special benefits. And our proposed assessment at that point in time was ninety-seven fifty, nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and it was within that range. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had a specific report done for this property, for this project, and how it related to the values of the property and the benefits to those properties. Again, the study concluded that there is a special benefit, and it ranged between nine thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And so we are proposing the assessment being ninety-four hundred dollars, which is below that range, which then says that all of the profit, all of the benefit exceeds the assessment. So this is what that assessment looks like. Total assessment's ninety-four hundred dollars. It would be assessed over fifteen years at five and a half percent with annual payments of nine thirty-six forty-eight. People pay their taxes in various ways. Sometimes if they don't have a mortgage, they write the checks, you know, two different payments or things like that. Or if they have a mortgage, those assessments could just be rolled into the escrow and paid on a monthly basis. We've gone through this road improvement project now since two thousand and twenty. Back in two thousand and twenty, we did Johnson Portland, Carlson Alexander Herman Town Road over between Okerstrom and Stebner. In twenty-one, we did Sunbeam and Swan Lake. In twenty-two, we had planned to do Uggstead Road from Highway fifty-three to Maple Grove Road, and we were starting that process, but it took, we had some delays in getting state approval for and federal approval for that project, so that was delayed until two thousand and twenty-three, and we completed that then. Also during that time, it was not a residential assessment process. We also assessed properties in the Herman Town marketplace for some of the road improvements that we made there as well. So in two thousand and twenty-four, this is our current project was Herman Town Road between Highway two and Uggstead and Old Midway Road. Just kind of a map of this starts from, this map shows from Highway two to just almost Five Corners Road, and it also includes Old Midway. And then the next one just shows from Five Corners, again, it kind of overlaps there, over to Uggstead. But you're all familiar with the road project, the scope of it. The total cost of the project was three point nine million, seven hundred and eighty thousand of that was for the bridge, which is not part of the assessment project. And then there was also, that was the construction cost, and then there was soft costs for engineering, right away acquisitions, administrative work, geotechnical evaluations, all of that. The total cost of four point six million dollars. Of that, six hundred and fourteen of it was funded by the a local bridge replacement program from the state of Minnesota. We are looking at assessing ninety-five parcels at ninety-four hundred dollars each, and the total general fund would pay three point one million, and that was the city issued debt for that amount earlier this year and will be paid off over twenty years. So that works out to be just under twenty percent of the total cost that we are assessing the landowners. So this kind of the next process is this, this public hearing, where you can provide your comments to the council. We are looking at individual hearings. If you do object, we will have an individual hearing with you and the council. We are looking at two different dates. November twenty-six, starting at three P M. After the total number of people objected, who are objecting, we will schedule individual fifteen minute time slots for you to meet with the city council. We'll also have a second date, December second, between two and eight. Part of that will be in front of the city council meeting on December second. Letters will be hand delivered to you if you have an objection, giving you your individual hearing times. The, if you want to proceed with the payment of the assessments, you can pay that in full at City Hall by December second. But after December second, if the city council approves that assessment, and it's not paid in full before that date, then you can still pay it by December thirty-first and avoid any interest payments. But after December second, it will likely show up on your property taxes. So you could pay it after December second, but it would still show up on your property taxes as a bill, even though it's been saved. It's just, that's the timing of the work with the county in terms of, they need to have a certain date to get it on their, into their system. So it'll be paid in full, but it might still show onto your property taxes. And then if you haven't paid by that point, it will be, show up on your property taxes in two thousand and twenty-six. So Mayor, that's all I have for our presentation.
Okay, we're going to move into public input on this public hearing. I want to get a couple of things out of there. First, we're asking everyone to limit the public input to three minutes per person. We're going to start with the people that are in council chambers, and once we've exhausted the current people in the building, we'll move to the online meeting, and anyone who's online will be able to testify then. You, if you want to object, you don't have to testify to object, but a written objection has to make it to the city clerk at the end of the public hearing. We're going to have a little bit of a five-minute break at the end of our public input to cap off the public hearing, so until the end of that five-minute break, you can turn those written objections into the city clerk. There are forms available outside, you can fill those out and give them to the clerk. They don't need to be specific as far as your objections. All you have to say is, I object, and put your name and address and contact information on there. So we will start with anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak publicly to the council. Please approach the podium and start with your name and address. Does anybody want to get started? Okay.
Hello, I'm Paul Pearson. I live at fifty-three eighty-two Herman Town Road. Just real quick, just, I'm just going to go through the basics on this objection that I have here. So, so as he has gone through it, he says there's some additional added value to somebody's house because they replaced the road out front, which is covered by taxes across the entire country. I mean, that is the point of, I mean, it's one of the aspects of property tax. That's just nonsensical. There's no added value from the road that was replaced. Should have been replaced twenty years ago, by the way. So, and then, of course, anybody who lived here and moved, that's all, it doesn't make anybody different, so it's all assessed to the people now. Doesn't make any sense. Assessments cost between two and eight hundred dollars for property tax, or rather for property assessments, not ninety-four hundred dollars. And of course, that number is, oh, let's not based on what it costs to do it. It's what we think the added value is. It's just, it's a nonsensical thing. It's just crazy. And then, and the, the idea that, that the people who, the hundred houses or whatever, that, that live on that road, they have to pay for the road and anything that you guys include assessments of properties off of that for the entirety of anybody who drives on there and saying, well, no, because this is a special added value. It's like, okay, then put a toll road on it, and we'll collect the toll for the next X amount of time. It's, it's just, it's, that's ridiculous. If, if that would have been assessed to everybody in Herman Town, it would have cost everybody about four hundred bucks. Instead, you're going to cost, you're going to charge a hundred people ninety-five hundred dollars because you got around to replacing a road that's covered under property taxes? That's crazy. That's my.
Thank you. Next? Does anyone else wish to speak to the council tonight?
I'm here living on Herman Town Road. Basically, what he was saying is what I got written down. The road hasn't been redone since nineteen eighty-nine. And when it was redone, it was just ground up and relaid. We've been paying taxes on it for eighty-nine, beating the heck out of our vehicles, potholes. You wouldn't fix any of the potholes, or we'll get to it, we'll get to it, until somebody wrote on the road. And then, boy, you guys did it right away. We ain't fixing our cars, you ain't, cars are getting out of alignment, knocking stuff off. So since nineteen eighty-nine, you haven't done, you didn't even do a good job then. The job that's done is rotten. You didn't make the driveways as white as they were. Semis just be able to go on my place. I had delivered, had hay delivered. I had my pole barn delivered. Semis walked in there, no problem. It's easily five feet narrower than what it used to be. My culvert's longer. But the dirt you took out of my place, we ain't even got half of that back in there. The bumps on the road is a rotten job. That's understandable that yous don't do the construction part of it, but you go from Lindell Road to the bridge in front of Bob Lowfald's house, there's a drop in the road already, plus there's multiple bumps in there. The drop in the road, if you guys take a blade and a half when you can, you're going to hit that road, it's going to crack, it's going to be junk, and we're paying ninety-four hundred for a rotten job? I don't think so. It's, it's unacceptable. I don't know where the state inspector comes in on this stuff, but they, the roads, a lot of the driveways ain't the original width. Some are better than others, but mine ain't even close to as white. I do realize culvert's longer, but I had a smaller culvert that you told me when I built the place, and used my driveway for a dam. Half of my gravel ended up in the neighbors down the road for years. I had to get a truckload every year, so I let the sod grow up on both sides so it didn't wash it out as bad. So I guess that's my, my objection is, you did put in a better culvert after I talked to Torey Vee about it. But the, the width of my driveway nears wide, plus the road is just drive down from Lindell Road all the way to Midway Road. But the worst parts from Lindell to Five Corners, may as well say. You can see the dip in the road, you can feel it. I mean, you can see the blacktop's higher in one spot, and then it drops right off. And I just don't see paying ninety-four hundred for such a crappy job on the thing. That's my complaint.
I didn't get your address. Your address?
Oh, fifty-four fifty-one.
Okay, thank you.
This would be down from my, my place. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Thorstensen, fifty-seven eighty-four Herman Town Road. And I've been out there for forty-plus years and have seen little or no maintenance done on this road since I've been there. To me, I feel this is just a big catch-up that should have been, you know, should have been taken care of over years, not just bang here. Now you're stuck with this big bill. And that's my, my big complaint is, I feel that this is a mill and fill. They just came by my place, milled it, filled it, and that was it. Yeah, they put culverts in, it's covered under a stormwater. That's covered. It's not part of their own job. And also, it isn't done, so why are we getting billed? I've heard this at least three times. You're not going to see a bill. You know, it's all done. Mailbox is in, fire number's in. Everything's done. Well, it isn't done, and now we're seeing a bill. That isn't right either. That isn't part of the, part of the gig. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Lowfald. I work, I live at fifty-five oh-two Herman Town Road. I was not planning to speak, but they bring up a lot of good points. Usually you do not pay for a job until it is completed, or if you do, you pay half, and then you do half once the job is completed. It is not done yet. So that is a very great question that is brought up as to why are we needing to pay this on, in December, right before Christmas, at the end of the year? That is a crazy amount of money. That is exactly half of my yearly income. Ninety-four hundred dollars is huge for me and my husband. That is a financial hardship that I can't just drop in a month, in not even a month, two weeks. I don't have the ability to do that in general. It's going into my emergency fund. If I were to get sick in an accident, or if we wanted to start a family, we can't do that. That takes away so much of our emergency fund and everything that we have saved. We have school loans still that we are paying. We have a mortgage that we are still paying. We have interest from other loans that we are dealing with, from car payments. This ninety-four hundred dollars is it's a big deal. And it may not be a big deal for everybody in here, but I know a lot of people here are retired. They don't have an income anymore. They're on social security. What are they supposed to do when ninety-four hundred dollars out of their savings is gone? Especially when these other residents are going to have increased medical needs in the future as well. So I just really want you to know that dropping that ninety-four hundred dollars is not easy for us, and that is something that is going to be pretty detrimental to my husband and I for probably years, as we figure out where that money's coming from and to build back up our emergency fund that has already taken us ten years to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Just start, just start with your address.
Mike Lowfald, fifty-five twenty-four Herman Town Road. And I hadn't signed up to speak, but I, after hearing what everybody else has been saying, there's one point that I wanted to bring up is that I've also lived on that road for over forty years. From my family's property, my brothers and I also received land, and we decided to settle on Herman Town. And we, we knew we lived on a bumpy road, and in nineteen eighty-nine, they came and they did some quick fixes to it, and it was smooth for about one year, and then it started really deteriorating. The point I wanted to make is that we've been waiting forty-some years for our turn, for our road to get repaved. And when it finally does, we have to pay for it. Ninety-four hundred dollars for my wife and I, who are both retired, is, is a bit of a hardship. You know, can we make it work? You know, we really shouldn't have to, is what I'm saying. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to address the council? Anyone else? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone online that wishes to address?
Mr. Mayor, we do have folks online. If they want to just raise their hand or unmute themselves, start with their name and address, they can proceed.
Thank you. We have a raised hand? No raised hands? Is there anyone else online that would like to speak? Is there anyone online that wishes to speak at this public hearing about the road improvement district for the Herman Town Road? Okay, we'll have one last opportunity for anybody that wants to speak up, whether they're in chambers or online. If there is no one, we will then close the public hearing and take a short break. Just, just start with your name and address and.
Five-six-five-four Herman Town Road. So we purchased our property December of two thousand and eighteen, coming in on, when all the graffiti was all on the road. What I can say then is, I didn't get a deduction on the price of my house because we were on a bad road. And in reading the appraisal report that came out and the formula that was used saying that it increases the value, having a nice road increases the value of my home, I just wanted to say that I really disagree with it. The formula that was used is looking at revenue generating properties, not single-family homes. And ninety-four hundred dollars is a hardship for probably ninety percent of the people on that road for the general public to use, not just us. Thank you.
So we're not to speak to the council. We will close the public input portion of the public hearing. There will be no decisions made tonight on this subject, but you will, anyone who has objected or turns in a written objection before we start our regular meeting. will receive some type of notice when the hearing is. We're looking at November twenty-sixth and December second for the dates. We anticipated, uh, that they would take two days for us to get done with the number that we are looking at. Thank you all for attending. Uh, we're going to take a short five-minute break. Allow every, anyone who wants to move to leave, uh, anyone who wants to sit through the rest of our business, you're more than welcome to do that. We've got a whole bunch of interesting stuff. Thank you. City Council agenda. Uh, communications are placed on file. Mr. Mulder, could you give us a short, uh, synopsis of the budget and brief and wellness center update that we had at pre-agenda?
So included in the pack, it was, um, a, a short four-page budget and brief, kind of highlights the, um, issues relative to the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget. I sent out a link to, uh, the online budget, um, to the city council, um, uh, earlier today, just after our meeting and before this one. Um, so that's out there. And then, um, the wellness center update was simply a report from, uh, the Y about the operations of the wellness center. Um, they seem to be doing well, um, and it seems to be a success for the community.
Thank you. Uh, next, we will move on to public discussion. This is for general public discussion about items not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. If you wish to discuss an item on the agenda, there will be a period of time during that item's consideration for that also. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the council about general public discussion at this time? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the city council under public discussion? Anyone online, Joe? Raise it.
Yep.
If anyone online wishes to speak, please just unmute and start with your name and address. Last opportunity for general public discussion. Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is minutes, approval or correction of the November fourth, twenty-twenty-four city council continuation minutes. And accounts payable approved general city warrants from November first, twenty-twenty-four through November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of three million, five hundred seventeen thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Do we have a? Motion by Council Jelly to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Jones. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two nineteen. Resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for audit services in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for the audit and financial statements. Do we have a motion relating to this?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
So this is a annual contract, um, that we have with, and we've worked with, um, Clifton Larson Allen for a, a number of years. They've done a, they've been a good partner for us, and so this would be for the twenty-twenty-four, um, audit.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council?
The, uh, memo, maybe that's the wrong word, but, uh, resolution summary says that the city, this has been the city's audit firm for several years. Um, do we put this out for competitive bid every few years, or do we?
Uh, we haven't. We've done it probably, I think I, in fifteen years, I think we've done it twice.
Okay. Do we feel like we're getting a good price?
Uh, yeah, I do. I think we do. I think that's a fair price.
And it does now fully include the fire department, all of their city department. We used to have separate audits for them. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Who's any public input on this resolution? Please identify yourself with your name and address. Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two nineteen? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-four, two-twenty. Resolution approving change order number twenty for road improvement project number five thirty-four. Uggstead Narrowhead Roads to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of one hundred four thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is a change order that reflects all of the various changes in quantities from the original contract to what was actually, um, used on the project.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on the approval of change order number twenty for road improvement project number five thirty-four? Is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two twenty? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-one. Resol- resolution approving final pay request for road improvement district number five thirty-four to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
So this is the final payout for the twenty-twenty-three road project, and this releases, um, all the remaining, uh, retainage for the project.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Their punch list is done?
Yes.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two twenty-one? Uh, any public input on the approval of the final pay request for road improvement district number five thirty-four? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-two. Resolution approving pay request number six for Fichtner Park Improvements to Caskey Incorporated in the amount of five hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
So this is, uh, work that's been done over the last month, um, at the, at Fichtner Park.
Thank you. Is there any council questions or input on this resolution?
Uh, given recent events and recent projects, is the, all of the work covered by this five thousand twenty-eight dollars gone to our satisfaction?
So the question, uh, is the, is the payment in front of us for, uh, work that's, uh, satisfied, complete, and accepted? Um, the short answer is, um, no, we have a, uh, a punch list that the contractor has been diligently, um, going through. So there, there are a number of items on that punch list that are, are part of this, this payment. And, and just a reminder, we have, um, there's still several hundred thousand dollars of, of work that remains on this project.
That we have not paid, that we're still withholding.
Correct.
Yes.
For example, um, the, the landscape features, they're still part of the building that we're, we're withholding. Um, there's, there's stuff on the, the site furnishings that we're withholding. So we, we still have, um, like I said, several hundred thousand dollars worth of work that remains to be paid.
Is it standard to pay for work even though there's a punch list still associated with that specific work?
Yes. We, we do that on, when the work is completed, they, they get paid for it. And then, um, we typically don't pay for unacceptable work. So a punch, an example of some of the things on the building is, there's, you know, culp joints that need to be tightened up. There's touch-up painting that needs to be done. There's some concrete that needs to be, you know, patched. Those are all things that are, are punch list items. And part of it, you know, the, the thought is, you know, this work falls, we still ha- are holding a five percent retainage on a, you know, four million dollar contract. So not only have the retained, but there's still, um, monies on contract work that's still not complete. But that's typically how we, um, uh, manage the, the contracts with contracts. The, the work is done and then we pay them for it.
That answer is true on every pay app.
Correct.
Every pay app that we do, there are potentially punch lists and things that, okay, this needs to be, um, addressed. You need to do a little bit of improvement here.
I, I can, maybe I'll clarify my question. I wasn't so much concerned about a punch list because I understand that that's not in our practice. I was more concerned with paying for work that was done not to our standard. And you're saying that the work that's been done has been approved?
Yes.
Okay.
With, with one exception, and I, we've, um, pointed this out a few months ago, was the, the basketball park. And that's something that, you know, we're, we've recognized and we're, we're holding off on, on that payment until next year, when it's done to our satisfaction.
If I'm reading the application right, payment application, it, we're paying five twenty-eight, one sixty-seven, but there's still a balance to finish of six hundred ninety-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
So.
Be enough to get them back.
Yeah.
Anything else from council?
No, I'm just, I'm comfortable with it. I just, was just curious. If it's a punch list, then we'll get it done.
Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-two? Do we have any public input on the resolution of approving pay request number six for Fichtner Park Improvements? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-three. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute an acceptance of easement agreement to the city of Herman Town from Richard and Jill Nichols for the Herman Town Trail Project. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
So this is then easement that, as part of that, uh, trail project, uh, south out of, uh, Keen Creek Park. Um, so this is the first of one of those easements that we're looking to acquire.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-three? Is there any public input on the resolution accepting an easement agreement for the Herman Town Trail Project? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-four. Resolution ordering improvement and directing preparation of final plans and specifications for road improvement district number five-five-two, Bill and Erv's Properties Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc, or a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Jones. Mr. Mulder?
Uh, about a month or so ago, you had a, uh, public hearing on the potential, um, improvement project for the Bill and Erv's property. This is the property along, um, Highway fifty-three and a vague bypass. Um, this would be, um, some retail properties, um, that are not included as part of the grant. And so now that we've received the grant, want to move forward with both projects, um, we're asking that you order the hearing, order the improvement at this point.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-four? Any public input on the resolution on road improvement district number five-five-two? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-five. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for engineering services with a total not to exceed the contract amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty dollars for road improvement district number five-five-two, Bill and Erv's Properties Incorporated with Northland Consulting Engineers. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
Now that you've ordered the project, we need an engineer to do the plans and specs and put it out for bid and then do the construction engineering, and we're proposing to hire Northland Consulting Engineers for that project.
Thank you. Uh, and before, uh, when we go around, uh, Mr. Geisler, is there anything you want to?
Um, yeah, I will state that, uh, my son worked for Northland Consulting Engineers, and the result of this contract has no financial benefit to he or I.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-five? Do we have any public input on the resolution for the engineering services for road improvement district number five-five-two? Roll call, please.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jones? Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two-two-six. Resolution ordering improvement and directing preparation of final plans and specifications for road improvement district number five-five-three, Hawkline Business Park. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Jones to approve. Is, Mr. Mulder?
So this is, uh, related to the Bill and Erv's property. Um, this is a separate project that we received, um, a state grant from, uh, or for. And so this is a separate project, um, but would do the same kind of thing. We had that public hearing about a month or so ago. This would then order that improvement.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I did have one, just for clarity. Is this the first project the city is putting general levy dollars towards, uh, utility improvements on?
They don't believe there's any general levy dollars.
Wow.
There's sales tax. Um, well, the answer is no, but now you're going to ask me the next question on what other? Um, depending upon, again, you know, how, as you think about these, so, um, the city spent, um, sales tax dollars on extending a pipe along Maple Grove Road from Lowberg to about, um, the church, um, several years ago, I want to say twenty eighteen. the church several years ago, I want to say twenty eighteen. Um, we put some, um, sales tax dollars to that. We put some sales tax dollars to the pipe, water and sewer pipe going from Maple Grove back to the backfields and the soccer. If you give me some more time, I could think of a couple of other ones too, but off the top of my head, I'm hard pressed to come up with them. So, yeah.
The only reason I ask is Mr. Staber was at our meet, at the HITA meeting last month. And one of the concerns he brought up was the expense, how expensive it is to do utility work. Um, now, I don't know if he's approached the city about us contributing to that project or not. I'm just wondering, you know, is this the door we're willing to open on a bigger scale? Because as soon as we do it once, which doesn't sound like this is our first time, but as soon as you start doing it, there's going to be more people asking us to do it.
And arguably, it gets harder to say no too, but you have the ability to decide which projects you want to contribute to. And that is really just a legislative act on your part. So you have complete, you know, the ability to decide which projects you want to support and which ones you don't.
I, I think the water line you mentioned on Maple Grove, doesn't some of that cover Mr. Staber's property?
Well, yeah, I mean, there was that, that project along Maple Grove would have benefited him, but there was, I mean, some of that, there was some assessment, there were some city contribution. And I can't, I, I can't do the details off the top of my head, but it's like, yes, I mean, there's, there are, there are various circumstances where we've put utilities in Fleet Farm. Um, we probably did some of that, that we, um, they did some of the work, we abated it and paid them back. So there have been various situations where we've done that.
Okay. Then mayor and council, I'd like to add what John said. Recently, we put the water line on Ave Junction. We made that tie-in with the, with the, with the sales, the water utility fund. Also, specific to the Staber parcel, the entire frontage along Maple Grove Road has water and sewer there for him to access. So the utility costs he's referring to are the cost to develop the site.
Okay.
The public utilities are there.
Any other questions or comments?
No, the history lesson was helpful.
I just can't remember all the history. Because I'm like, oh, I know that the answer is no, but I knew the second part of the question.
You didn't know there was going to be a test.
The reason I ask is I, I think the city can do more to spur growth, especially in there, you know, and the residential thing is a whole different topic, obviously, than commercial, but I, I do think it's, it's only for the good, having the public benefit that we put this in there, so.
And that was the case of Ave Junction. That was to better the water system as a whole, correct?
Correct. Yeah. So mayor and council, again, just some other recent one is we just, the, we use the water utility for the improvement on Highway fifty-three this fall. You know, we've done it for the water tower. We've, um, there's the water mains on Lowberg and Market and Mall Drive back in the day. Those were all part of the water utility fund too.
Anything else from council? Any public input on this? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two six? Any public input on, uh, final plans and specifications for road improvement district number five, five, three? Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones? Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two seven.
Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for engineering services with a total not to exceed contract amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars for road improvement district number five, five, three, Hawkline Business Park with Northland Consulting Engineers. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder?
Again, same kind of story there. As you've ordered the projects that we're proposing or recommending, the higher NCE to prepare the plans and specs and then do the construction engineering when it goes to construction in twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. And I want to clarify that the amount that I voiced slightly different than the amount in the written resolution because we didn't have the full added electrical work quote of twelve thousand dollars prior to the, tonight. Do you have any questions or comments from council?
Uh, I, similar to what I said before, my son works for Northland Consulting Engineer and the result of this contract award has no financial benefit to he or I.
Thank you. Uh, is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two seven?
Yes, mayor and council, I'd just like to add, it wasn't brought up at pre-agenda, but uh, resolution two two five and two two seven are, um, they're separate resolutions, but we will be preparing one set of plans, one specification, one contract and hiring one contractor to do the work. The reason these are split up is for the sole purpose of the grant because we have to track all costs associated with the Bill and Erv's site that's associated with the grant. So that's why there's, um, two separate resolutions for this. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two seven? Any public input on the agreement for engineering services for road improvement district number five, five, three? Roll call, please.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Next is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two eight. Resolution directing the immediate abatement of hazardous structures with the Mobile Home Park located at forty-nine, twenty-one Eddie Avenue. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counsel Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Holmes address this one?
Sure.
Brandon, could you fill us in on this, Brandon?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Uh, so what I'm specifically requesting here is that you guys issue a order of the council requiring the property owner to abate by removement to hazardous trailers that are present. Both are vacant at the moment, uh, though they have occasionally been used to squat in. They have no current uh, sewer or water that's compliant. They have structural failures. Their floors have failed. Uh, they have egress issues, electrical issues. The list is pretty numerous. So at this point, there is no real path forward where they could be repaired. I've already issued a directive to the property owner he had till November twelfth to comply. He has not done so. So what we're requesting here is you order him to comply. If he does not comply within twenty days, we would then be authorized to seek a directive from the district court authorizing us to remove these and dispose of them, uh, and then assess the taxes, the cost either back on taxes or as part of further civil action or using revenue from fines that are currently being assessed.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I have one. Is this one of these, the one that you had to get a search warrant to go into?
Yes, and that is still pending. Um, so we will still be working that out again. We would still have twenty days before we took action.
Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-four dash two two eight? Any public input on the resolution directing the immediate abatement of hazardous structures within the Mobile Home Park located at forty-nine, twenty-one Eddie Avenue? Roll call, please.
Counsel Geisler?
Aye.
Counsel Jelly?
Aye.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counsel Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Mulder, is there any need for a closed session this evening? Uh, next item of business then is a motion to recess. Do we have that motion?
Move to recess.
Motion by Counsel LeBlanc. Is there a second? Second by Counsel Jones. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same.